Good evening. It is Tuesday, December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, at six P. M. My name is Joe Baker, and as Mayor of Kennedy, Texas, it is my honor to welcome everyone here tonight and call this regular meeting of the Kennedy City Council to order. I will now call the roll and establish whether or not a quorum is present. District one, council member Cindy Seine?
Here.
District two, council member John Rodriguez?
Here.
District three, council member Chris Parker is unable to be with us this evening due to a death in the family, so we want to keep Chris and his family and our thoughts and prayers at this time. District four, council member James Douglas?
Here.
District five, council member Sandra Schultz?
Here.
Four members of the city council are present, and we have a quorum present this evening. I would like to welcome Pastor Matt Singleton from First Baptist Church of Kennedy, who will lead us in prayer. If everyone would please rise for prayer and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Thank you, Mayor. It's an honor to be with you guys tonight and offer a prayer, so let's pray to the Lord together. Father God, we come together tonight, and I'm thankful for our civil servants who do an outstanding job looking after the business of our city. I pray that you would grant them the wisdom and fortitude necessary in today's world to, God, plow out a path that would be pleasing to you and be beneficial to our citizens. God, we, as Mayor Baker mentioned just now, we do pray for Chris and his family as they experience a loss, and while I don't know details, some may, we know that you know all about it, and, God, you are concerned, and in our presence with them in this time of need, we pray that your Holy Spirit would bring comfort into their family and walk with them through the grieving process. I hope I pray for tonight's meeting and the items on the agenda, and each person represented here tonight working together on our behalf, God, that it would be a time of discussion and, God, a path forward and would be blessed by you, and, God, that you would be with them in this time as they discuss these things. God, we are so grateful for your love for us and for how you have shown that to us in Christ, and it's in his name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Pastor Singleton, for leading us in prayer this evening. Much appreciated. Next item on the agenda is Agenda Item Number Five, Citizen Comment Facility. Do we have anyone to sign up for comments?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. Would you like to step forward?
How's it going?
Good evening.
Uh, pretty good. As some of you know, I've been a city employee for five and a half years, and I recently turned in my two weeks' post. I've found employment somewhere else, and I feel it will be beneficial to me and my family as far as me personally coming home to feel better about my job. Not saying I do not love my job. I love this job. It took me a long time to get this job, and I've put a lot into this job. I've learned a lot from it. I've benefited a lot from it. In the past two years, I just feel like the employees ourselves have not been as appreciated...
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah?
I'm gonna put a stop to this right now. This is a human resources thing, and is ineligible for citizen comments, and is also ineligible to be done in an open format.
How does the council feel about that? As you know, if the majority of the council votes to allow him to continue to speak, the gentleman here can continue to speak.
Well, the problem with it is he may say something that violates laws of other employees, and that is the problem.
I don't have a problem. Does anybody on the council have a problem?
Long as he doesn't mention other employees.
Sir, you can continue without mentioning specifics of the city employees? Okay. Please continue.
Yes, sir. So, as you know, we've all had issues with wages and budgets and licensing and different things. For me personally, when I was hired on, I was told something. It changed, changed again, and it will continue to change. A C groundwater license to me was a big accomplishment. I felt very proud about that. But to me, the pay rate that was given to me for that felt kind of of an underachievement. Twenty-eight, I'm young in my life, and I have a long career ahead of me, wherever I want to go. But I chose to work here out of all places because my wife was born and raised here. This is where she wanted to be. I'm not from Texas. I'm not from Kennedy. But I chose to dedicate myself to this town regardless, and I loved every minute of it. I missed birthdays, celebrations. I've been out three days straight working to provide a service for this town. And at this point, I don't feel it's worth it to my family for me to not be there anymore. So, I don't want to leave, but the way that it is, I don't feel like we're being appreciated as much as we should. There's been a few council members who have stopped by, checked on us. Parker's one. Sandra's offered us waters and stuff, and time where we've been out there and keep working. But I've, I don't feel appreciated as far as the rest of the council. And as far as it goes, half the citizens can't even show their appreciation of fear of us getting in trouble. Citizens offer us water, snacks, and we have to turn them down because we don't want to get fired over it. We've been down to four field operators, and it's been a struggle for all of us. And we just keep on fighting because that's the way that we, we're a team. Regardless of the situation, we have put forth every effort we can to provide this town a service that it needs. But I don't feel that it's appreciated anymore. So, I've turned in my two weeks, and I'm gonna go work somewhere else that I hope I will feel appreciated at the end of the day when I go home. And I apologize to come up here and do this in front of everybody, but I just felt it needed to be known before I leave, because once I leave the city, I'm no longer allowed to come in here and voice my opinion. Other people have opted to leave because they don't feel like they can do their job. I've put in five years. I've got experience, and I should be doing a lot more than I am right now. But I can't because we can't get the people in at a rate that we are. It costs more in town to have a one-bedroom apartment than you can make here. And without government help, you'll never make it. This is an oilfield town. There's all kinds of oilfield companies that pay all kinds of money. So, all the apartment complexes and landowners that want to rent, they're renting at oilfield rates. We may be a small town, and I understand that, and it's hard for y'all to pay a good amount. But at the end of the day, it's, the people that you want aren't gonna work for what y'all are willing to pay.
We do appreciate your comments. There's a three-minute time limit for public comments, but we do appreciate you coming here this evening and speaking to us honestly, and we wish you the best in your future.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments this evening from anyone in the audience? If not, we will continue to Agenda Item Number Six, Proclamation, Kennedy Lions Football I'd like to read the proclamation. Whereas the Kennedy High School Boys Football Team, the Lions, through hard work and perseverance, completed its regular season with a nine-and-three record, the most wins since nineteen ninety-five, achieved the designation of two-A Division One Bi-District Champions, Area Finalists. The Lions take great pride in respecting their opponents, and they play the game of football with class and dignity. And whereas the demanding athletic competition requires the highest levels of skills, determination, teamwork, and focus on selfless commitment to others, and whereas these twenty-four outstanding student athletes have represented themselves, their families, their school, and their community proudly. And whereas the team was coached by Athletic Director Shawn Alvarez, whereas it is a great pleasure to express the Kennedy Varsity Football Lions on behalf of the city council and all the citizens of Kennedy, Texas, our sincere congratulations. And now, therefore, I, Joe Baker, Mayor of Kennedy, Texas, publicly commend the Kennedy Varsity Football Lions for their accomplishment and hereby proclaim December fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one, as Kennedy Lions Football Day. And we have a signed proclamation here, and I'll be sure to present this to Coach Alvarez and the team, but we're very proud of the Lions, and James, I'm sure you are as well. Outstanding season. I haven't seen a season this good since I moved here almost twenty-five years ago, so. Some fine young student athletes. And we have another proclamation this evening. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Seven, Kennedy Fair Housing Month. And I will also read this one. Fair Housing Month Proclamation. Proclamation of December as Fair Housing Month. Whereas Title Eight of the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-eight, as amended, prohibits discrimination in housing and declares it a national policy to provide within constitutional limits for fair housing in the United States. And whereas the principle of fair housing is not only national law and national policy, but a fundamental human concept and entitlement for all Americans. And whereas the National Fair Housing Law during the month of December provides an opportunity for all Americans to recognize that complete success in the goal of equal housing opportunity can only be accomplished with the help and cooperation of all Americans. Now, therefore, we, the city council of Kennedy, Texas, do proclaim December as Fair Housing Month in the city of Kennedy and do hereby urge all the citizens of this locality to become aware of and support the fair housing law. Moving on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Departmental Reports. The first on the list is Public Works Report. Good evening, sir.
Good afternoon, Mayor of the city council. We'll start out here on page one. I've been looking into some alternate sources for fuel, and I've been working, trying to get Suncoast to give us a deal on some tanks and stuff, but I haven't got a whole lot of feedback from them yet with everything going on. They're a little backed up. Mr. Lynn has had Gary and I doing a little researching on some equipment. We had a little incident with the tailgate of a truck, trailer, and the ton went through the tailgate of the truck. We're, wrote up a couple employees for that. Been working getting some estimates for a fence repair that we had budgeted during our budget at the wastewater plant, and still trying to sort through that. Sent some information to T C Q concerning the S C P project for the Phase Two wastewater plant that was a while back. I sent them some more information today, just trying to get that cleared up. And then, I sent the December first update to T C Q for the extension granted on the two violations that we have left on the capacity rule for the wells and the service pump capacity. Again, I've just kind of mentioned that had, we got an extension till December twenty-twenty-two on that, and so maybe by then we'll have the service pumps in place, and then we'll just need to get an extension on the water coming from the new wells if it isn't in by then. So, as far as projects go, long way out to waterline replacement, we're waiting on the bores. Gary and I met with the contractor this afternoon, and they should have those done and completed hopefully by the end of next week. Maybe this week, but by the end of next week, you can have all that tied in there. And I'm sorry Chris is here because they're gonna really get in his yard, and I need to let him know this ahead of time, so I'll try to contact him, because they're gonna have to do the pit over there, and bore from that way going forward, and it's right in his yard, so. But I'll get with, with Chris, Mr. Parker with that over the next day or two, so we can get that tied in. Generators, again, all the pads have been poured for all the generators. We're still looking at December the twenty-second or some odd for the main generator to be at the R O plant, but I still haven't gotten confirmation when we talked about this morning, whether it was actually gonna arrive or be shipped out on the twenty-second. So, anyway, it's, it's on its way. I'm exactly sure where it is. I guess we need tracking number four, but, so it should be here and ready to go by mid-January anyway, I would think, so it's coming. I also got a call from Mr. Cortez on the manholes. He said they finally got what they needed, and they're making those now, so they should have those delivered within the next few days to finish those manholes going behind Greg Street through those woods over Torch Pulling. There's two that we're replacing there. So, those are, those are being made now. He called me today and told me that, so we're working on that. And then, we met with Grady for the eight-inch waterline extension, and that project is underway, and we met with him out there on the project, and then we've been keeping an eye on it. They've got, I believe, the boring done. They've got some pipe laid out on one eighty-one, so once they get the hard stuff done, that should go really quick on that. Under my notes here, we replaced one fire hydrant and repaired one at Le Mans Square. We got those working. We had a sewer line at the intersection of Second and Nichols. We replaced sixty feet of eight-inch cast iron sewer pipe. Can you believe that? Cast iron. Anyway, she just don't see much of that. And I want to, I already told Joe, but a special thanks to him for having his guys out there today to help work on that. I've been trying to get to that and just hasn't worked out that way, so I was glad that he was able to get out there and help repair that hole for me. Again, P W seven was damaged by a trailer not being properly secured. The security cameras have been installed at the One Cruise Training Center, shop across the street, the warehouse across Escondido. We're supposed to be getting the ones at the R O and the wastewater plant here pretty soon. I think their cameras are back ordered or whatever, but I'll get in touch with them here tomorrow probably or next day and find out where we are with that. Under training activities, Cody Bryan took an online class for utility safety. Austin Bryan took an online class for the R O operations and maintenance. In two thousand and eighteen, they passed a rule that no matter what license you had, if you weren't at a R O plant, you had to take this class as an additive. I took it when I first got here, and then Austin, when he got his C license a few months back, he took this class. It was an online class, so he's legal up there at the R O plant technically, so. Daniel Fuentes took an online basic wastewater. I did a four-hour webinar for E P P for T C Q, and we went monthly safety meeting. We went over that under color weather effects. And then I misspelled T W U A. How about that? I got a Q. Meeting at Florisville. I attended Hector Salinas and Austin Bryan. And then, my other reports, I apologize for having two page two, so if you go to the second page, too. We've got our water pumpage report. You can see the total pumpage from the wells was fifty million, but potable water produced to the distribution was thirty-eight point seven million. Then on page three, again, my water produced from the wells is a different number because we go through different days of the month with that number. We had a total of eighteen water leaks for the month for a total of one point five million gallons of water loss, and we billed out thirty-six point six million through billing, which leaves us a six point two zero percent of water loss, which is still not bad, but as long as we can keep under ten percent, I figure we're doing pretty good. And then the next page doesn't have a number, so page four is our water restriction page where I keep up with our water stage restrictions. And in that first column, you can see the numbers are way lower than in the second column, which is our water we can produce per day according to T C Q's rule. And then in the blue column, or the third column, you can see that's where we would actually hit Stage One. So, I believe something to that nature is on the agenda for tonight, so we can talk about that later on, Mr. Lynn or I, or whatever the case may be. And then, I'm sorry about not putting those pages under the well, because yeah, page five, can't see it, so a little. We've done our water, wastewater, we've done five hundred and ninety-three service orders and projects throughout the month. And then on the next page, page six, is our wastewater. You can see that we treated thirty point seven million gallons through the wastewater plant for the month, and I believe he's got on here one point five inches of rain, but when I added that up, I come out to two, but maybe my math was bad. We had no accidental discharges for the month. And then my last page is, again, is something that I do for my own benefit that shows gallons produced from the wells versus sewer effluent, and you can see on the, on the fourth day, we had an inch and a half of rain, and then you can see that those numbers kind of overtaken throughout the month, so it just shows we're still fighting a lot of I N I in the system. And that's all I have for you at this time.
Any questions from the council? I just have one question. Is there any salvage value from the cast iron pipe?
Uh, no, sir. I took some pictures of it, and it had so much buildup. One thing, you should never use cast iron for sewer, but, you know, back in the old, old days, they used a lot of ductile and cast iron under houses for plumbing and things like that. But it had so much buildup in it that you only had a hole about like this, because so much stuff, it collected to the sites from erosion, and then a rag comes through and first one thing to do. And then we even found a baseball in it, so when we were riding through it and we'd pull back, it would work, but then I guess that baseball was floating back and clogging it up. So, when we finally cut it and took it out, we found that baseball in there, and I was like, well, this could be part of the problem, but we replaced sixty feet across there, and then we hit another concrete foundation of some kind, and so we stopped right there, but eventually it needs to continue on down Nickel Street. But it was a very interesting dig. We found it looked like where they had an old traffic light or something right in the ditch center. They still had the wires coming out of the concrete slab and the piece of pipe once we got dug down far enough, so it was kind of cool. Then I talked to Joe, and he was telling us how the, that downtown part down there was, but long story, no, sir, the pipe can't be used for anything.
How long do you think it was in the ground?
Probably since nineteen ten. I mean, it's probably...
Over a hundred years.
Because from what I understand, that was probably one of the first parts of town that was built, so it could have been in there before that. So, I mean, it's possible.
Interesting.
Because just right across the ditch over there is that old water plant, you know, so that was probably built around the same time as the sewer. So, if you, I don't remember the date on that plaque. Does anybody? Do you, John? Do you remember that? I don't know.
That's old Kennedy. That's all of that area right there around the post office and went back toward the little convenience store. That's all old Kennedy, especially right there on the other side. You've got that, where the telephone company is, that's, that's cement. That street is cement there, so you're liable to find anything that's very old.
That was a big boom period in Kennedy around nineteen ten, nineteen eleven, just after the railroad came through.
So, they probably put the sewer in and then the water, so they were probably both done about the same time, so I would say it's been in there a long time, so. But it was an interesting dig. It's pretty cool.
Any other questions from Mr. Rodriguez? Thank you for your report.
Yes, sir.
Next, Agenda Item Number Eight, Departmental Reports, is Police Chief Report. Chief Ag.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll be real brief. I don't have anything. It's interesting, this hundred and ten-year-old pipe. Our animal control, you can see on our numbers for animal control, we have forty-three calls last month, picked up twenty dogs, eighteen cats. We did have rescue groups take eight of those, adoption take one. Also picked up a couple snakes, a possum, a raccoon, a fox. Just keeps going on, different animals we pick up. We issued thirty-five citations last month and twenty-one warnings. Those are usually animal on large type of calls, there were citations, so. We did have one incident with a couple dangerous dogs that we had to deal with that they had to pick up. Three dogs, I guess, was got out, killed a neighbor's dog, and so we had to go through the whole process with getting the court hearings, and they did a really good job on that. We had never had done with those before, so they did a good job with that, went to the court, got the court to order the, in order to keep a dangerous dog, you have to have signs on your fence, you have to have the insurance, you have to, so they went through all that to get that taken care of, so. But we got that taken care of for them. Also, I just found out today, they showed up today unannounced to do our inspection. The state did, came out to inspect our facility. They passed with no problems, everything is set. Last year, when they came out, we had to do some painting and some other stuff to get it up, so this year it's fine. There's no issues with the inspection, so it's good. For the police department, we still have, we currently have one opening. We're in the interview process now. Hope to have someone in the next few weeks, depending on how that goes. We did get two officers trained this month in field training, so we have some officers that can do field training now for, when we bring new officers in. The only ones I had at the moment were one officer and one sergeant was all I had, so we'll get some more of those trained. We are still doing, they are still collecting toys for tots. If anybody still wants to bring some in, you can bring them to us or City Hall here. We'll be handing out those toys on this Saturday, Saturday morning from nine to noon at the P D. We have about eighty-five families, I believe, that will be getting toys. If anybody would like to come by and be there with us, you're more than welcome. They will also get a gift card from H U B for food to go along with it, so F D will be there to hand out gift cards as well, so we'll be doing that Saturday morning. We also received a donation from Waste Connection. They brought us ten new bicycles that our school resource officer has identified the kids from the school that need bicycles, so we'll be getting those out next week as well to some of the kids that need them. They're mainly, you know, smaller, smaller bicycles, but they, those are all brand-new, and they came from Waste Connection to run them out to us, so we appreciate that. We do have, if you haven't noticed on our Facebook page, we do have our community survey up again this year. I do it every month, every year at the end of the month, or every year, last month of the year. This is part of our recognition program. We have to do community surveys, find out what people think about our department. Right now, we're running kind of far behind on the numbers of responses. Need about twenty-five, thirty more responses to get to where I was last year, so if you can, please go on our, on our Facebook page, there's a link, just click on it. It takes about a minute. It's ten questions. It's not hard. Same kind of, it's the same ten questions we use every year. That way, we get a really good track of sentiment, what people are thinking about the department, so. Whatever I have at the end of this month, I'll use for those numbers, so. That will be included, that survey will be included in our year-end reports that I'll do. You'll get this probably in January, my year-end report, everything to do with P D, so I'll get that to you. And lastly, our handler is down in training right now for our canine. He is over in East Texas. I came from Woodsville, over near Huntsville. If anybody has an idea where that is, I don't know. It's out in the middle of nowhere. This is his second week of training. He said, I talked to him the other day, he said the dog is doing really good. The trainer who's training him says he's extremely good, dope dog, and so we have high hopes for him. He should be, they'll be back, they'll be back this weekend, and I'll be able to deploy him starting next... employ him starting next week. He's a black lab, full of energy and jump up, he moves all the time, so we have high hopes for him, so. He will be hopefully, probably around January, maybe we'll bring him by to the office again, and he'll come by and say hello. He is not a bite dog, so he can be social, he can be around people, so it shouldn't have a problem. But anyway, that is what I have, unless you have questions.
Any questions from the council? If not, thank you, Chief, thank you for, for your effort with Toys for Thoughts, that's a great program, appreciate that and everything else that you do, sir.
Yeah, that's, that's a county-wide effort, everybody does really good on that, and it's nice that everybody in the county works on that.
Great program, thank you, sir. Next on Agenda Item Number Eight, under Departmental Reports, Building Department and Code Compliance Report. Good evening.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council. For the month of November, we had thirty-one service calls to our department. In good end of service calls, we had, you know, five building permits, we had two gas permits, one permit. We did collect fees of one thousand eight hundred and fifty-four for the month. For the month of November, we stayed pretty steady as far as permitting and collecting fees. We expect that to be at the same coming into December through the holidays, and having a pickup right after that for the new year. Just to let y'all know, my report is real simple, it's here, if y'all have any questions, just let me know, feel free to let me know, I can answer any questions I have for y'all. There's a couple of things that I want to bring up. We have been working with some developers as far as them coming in and bringing in some businesses. At this point, the businesses and the developers are still in the additional phases, but we are working with them, and I think Mr. Lynn is also working with them as well. The information that I get is making sure that they get the proper documentation, if they need the survey requests, or if they need flat plans, we try to provide them with what those developers hold, what we have, and then after that, then they start the next phase. Then after that, I kind of get the information, I refer it to Mr. Lynn, Mr. Lynn makes, you know, additional recommendations or whatever needs to be done. So we are working with developers, hopefully those developers will come in and bring a couple of new businesses into town. That's, that's going to be a plus, and always a plus for the city of Kennedy, so we look forward to that. We also are working in the downtown area, First Street and Main Street, we're looking at core substandard structures in the area, we're going to be addressing those substandard structures, getting the owners and maybe representative of those properties to see if we can take care of those issues as far as those substandard structures. One of them is right here in front of the City Hall, so we're looking at, we're looking at, hopefully, to see what their intentions are to do with the buildings and those structures. We should be getting an engineers report from that one, and we'll be working on, like I, like I said, on three other structures in the downtown area, and hopefully bring those up to code, or knock them down, whatever the owner decides they want to do, and then to see what, what can come about. So we're working on those in the downtown area. We're also working on various parts of town as far as general cleanup, cleaning up properties, and we did have some eyesores in the, in the Rumen Street, Pine Street area, we addressed those. I will send you a email on that as far as updating on those, Grand Road and so on. So we're looking at those, we're going to be updating Mr. Lynn on those as well, as far as those properties. So one of them has been addressed, the other two, we're working on those as well, they're both active. And as far as that, just to let you know, our collection station, our collection station will be closed December twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, and twenty-seventh, and January the first, and then we'll resume normal operations on January the third. We have placed that on the city's Facebook page to let the citizens know that the collection station will be closed on those days. So we expect after the holidays, and a bunch of people throwing away boxes and so forth from the, from the holidays, so just wanted to let, let y'all know that we did post it on Facebook, and we just want to let y'all know that status on the collection station. As far as anything else, that's simply my report, and we hope to have more standard reports coming in December and the January report.
Any questions from the council or Mr. Albiar?
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Did you say the twenty-fourth it was going to be closed? Collection station? Should it not also be closed the thirty-first as well? Thirty-first is Friday, City Hall's closed, City Hall's closed on New Year's Eve.
Okay, my mistake, we're all, we had also the first and thirty-first.
Okay, so it's five days altogether?
Yes, the twenty-fourth, twenty-fifth, twenty-seventh-
Yes.
-and thirty-first and first.
We reopen on January the third, so.
Yes, there we go.
The rest of them, that's-
No problem. Any, any other questions from the council?
Well, I had it for someone to show up on New Year's Eve.
Well, thank you for your report, Mr. Albiar, and thank you for your efforts, especially to help bring these new businesses to Kennedy, that's something we all want to see, so thank you.
Thank you.
Under Agenda Item Number Eight, Departmental Reports, the next report is Streets and Parks. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Council. As far as the month of November, the street crews did hand patching and grading for a total of seven days, using up forty-eight point four cubic yards of type D asphalt and eleven point nine cubic yards of pro-patch material. Streets also did patch a hundred and seventy-four potholes during a four-day stretch, using twenty-four and a quarter cubic yards of type D asphalt, for a total of seventy-two point six five cubic yards of type D and eleven point nine of pro-patch. Crews worked on drainage one day, removing and also adding five point one cubic yards of base, with four bags of Portland cement in order to stabilize the material. They removed twenty-four cubic yards of silt and dirt. Crews swept a total of six days. Crews mowed and weed-trimmed twenty-one roadways during the month of November. Also, the crews went out for the first time and shredded out at the Kennedy Regional Airport, shredded, mowed, weeded, and picked up trash for two days. That was the first time we've actually been out there in several years from where I'm where, and they picked up on it pretty good, so we looked for, we worked two days this month and two days last month, so for a total of four days possibly, we're out there. We're trying to find a little niche and a group of where we can hit it and be a little bit more efficient with our time, and finding which way works out best as far as when we start shredding, mowing, and trimming and picking up trash. So I'm looking for that possibly to cut down to two full days instead of four. So it's just being the first time, things were kind of, vegetation was growing up pretty good, so just having to remove and do some of the weeding around the area. But as far as signs are concerned, the guys repaired one sign during the month, they worked on drainage for nine days, cleaned out curbs and gutters for five days, removed tree limbs and debris, hauled off three trailer loads of brush to the collection station. They replaced four trash carts during the month, delivered six new trash carts, and picked up four damaged trash carts. Crews also picked up trash from the downtown receptacles on eight days. We performed PM on two separate days on the equipment there at the shop. Also, the crews worked at the city park for five days, working on some of the dirt work. We're out there trying to discard the connection from the Escondido Creek Parkway to our walking trail. We hauled a total of two hundred and eighty-six cubic yards of dirt off of the Nottingham Trail piles that we have over there in order to start working on that. They also worked two days setting up some of the lights there at the park for the Christmas in Kennedy activities, so. As far as projects we have going on right now, we're still going to continue working on that walking trail, and then we're also fixing to start hitting more of the roadways now with the street sweeper. We've hit a couple of areas, trying to get familiar with some of the guys getting on that piece of equipment and everything else, trying to find how close they can get to the gutters, the curbs, and stuff like that, without creating too much of an issue damaging some of them side wounds and stuff. So it's just one of the things that is taking a little bit more time trying to get everybody kind of cross-trained on it, so we're not just subject to one or two people sitting on it, and then we're kind of, you know, trying to scramble when them two, for some odd reason, wouldn't happen to show up, so the cross-training has been definitely helping. And then also, just a part of the projects that are going on, the Christmas lights are up from five-thirty PM till nine o'clock in the evening in January of December. So the guys will be out there, some days might be a little bit later, and sometimes they stay on a little bit later, just depending on the amount of foot traffic that we have going through the trail. Other than that, the other thing that I didn't have on my report was the East Main project has, had been substantially completed, so now we're looking at doing a walkthrough and reviewing everything to see where we sit in order to move forward with, with dirt boys on that cattle.
That's my street. Any questions from the council?
I do have one question, and if it's not allowed, please stop me. On Escondido Street, just alongside, parallel to the city building, what's going to happen with all those big giant piles of cement and debris and dirt? Are those being reused somewhere in the city, or is that something that's going to be hauled off, or is that likely?
That's something that maybe have to be hauled off, that's part of the, some of the spoils that come out from the jobs that the water department and the sewer, so we've got stuff in there that needs to be disposed of properly.
I hadn't really paid much attention to it, but we've got cows up there now, so I see it, but I'm going, I'm like, hmm, that's not very attractive. It's still very attractive, by the way, to our new beautiful facility.
So what was going on was we got TCEQ permission to take the spoils out to the sewer plant and sun-bleach them, but then when we started doing the East Main project, it cut right through all that. So we've got to identify the next area where we can go to do that, to dump them, to, because you have to spread them out so the sun can bleach them and sterilize it and all that, so. But yes, they will be removed as soon as we have the part necessary.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
I just have a question, though, don't put up a sign out there for people not to be driving through the lights out there?
We put barricades.
Oh, did you?
The location where they were coming in through is a wider area, which we use a lot when we have to do stuff as far as the windmill, the bridge and stuff like that, and I guess people have just kind of taken, hit upon themselves just to drive through that area and get to drive through. And so we went ahead and put barricades up there, and yesterday was the first day with the barricades, and we didn't have any issues with any vehicles on the trail yesterday, uh, last night.
Any other questions? We're coming. I just want to thank you for all your work at the park, especially with Christmas in the park this year, wonderful event, and I know a lot of hard work went into that, so thank you for that.
It was very nice, y'all did a good job.
And then on my parks report, as far as the complex, the crews went out and they drove and swept the fields for eight days, removed trash out of the receptacles on five days, weed-trimmed a total of ten days just around the complex itself. At the Kid Park and Pavilion, they weed-trimmed and mowed thirteen days, picked up trash eighteen days, hauled off either limbs that had fallen over or stuff that needed to be trimmed up on four different days. Also cleaned up Pavilion fifteen days, just with, with the little windstorms that we're getting in, we have a lot of the acorns and leaves and stuff like that, that they're, they're just constantly continuing to have to clean up and blow away and stuff like that. The walking trail bridge, basketball court in gazebo, they worked on weed-trimming and mowing a total of ten days, cleaned up and picked up trash from the area on eighteen days, the same thing with the branches in that area for three days. They also worked out there helping string the lights as far as on the, the bridge, the gazebo, the windmill, and they also helped out the, the street crew when it came to the rest of the decorations, the inflatables and everything else, to go along with Mr. Sharnes, and set up on that for three days on the walking trail. The Nottingham locks and the soccer field, they weed-trimmed and mowed for four days and picked up trash in them areas, the four days that they were out there mowing and weed-trimming. And on the back, you have pretty much the street report of what went on as far as the jobs for the month. It was a little bit shorter month, but it seemed like the workload didn't slow down.
Any questions from the council on the parks part of the report? Again, I want to thank you also for the work you're doing to connect Escondido Creek Parkway with Joe Nellin Park. I ran into a young family from Chode Saturday when I had my coffee at the park event, and they like to extend their workout by going through both parks, and this will make it a lot easier for them and everybody else that visits the park to do that, so appreciate you.
We do have a lot of foot traffic that actually connects both, so.
It'd be a little nicer if you have an actually prepared pathway, that would be much better.
Yes.
Thank you. Next, under Departmental Reports, City Secretary Report, Ms. Mallon.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. I wanted to start out by giving you guys an update on Savvy Citizen. I don't know if you saw the flyer when you walked in, I'd like to pass this out to you. So the city of Kennedy is trying to become better at communication with the citizens, we're trying to be a little more transparent in information, trying to relay information to our citizens, and so we have signed up with Savvy Citizen, and citizens can now go on and download the app from Google Play or the App Store, or can go to savvyscitizenapp.com, and it's a free app that the city is registered with, and you just put in your phone number and email address, and any communication the city has to go out, whether it's coffee at the park with the mayor, or it's an open, it's a meeting, or if we're having a community event, or there's a water outage, any kind of information that we can convey to the citizens, we're going to start using this form of communication, and I just wanted to give this to you guys and ask for you guys to sign up for it as well. There is a calendar that's part of this, and I am working with our website designer to link the calendar to it, so that way if there's anything that is going out through push notifications of it, then anyone who goes to our city website will be able to see what is, what is available. We do have the option of potentially being able to partner up with, say, a school, or the chamber, or even our library, so if there's any events going on, they can publicate, publish notes on this as well to go out to the citizens. And that one it took place as of today, and we are working, as I mentioned, to get the calendar on the website. That's great.
We talked about this at the meeting earlier, this is a great way to help people be aware of oil-water notices, or, or utility outages of any kind, this is a good thing, so thank you for making this happen.
It is quite interesting, because if, if someone receives a notification and they want to go down and post it on their website, or through their Facebook or Twitter, or a message through Messenger, it allows for the individual who's receiving the notification to continue to be able to forward it on, and it allows for links. I, I've already set some stuff up on it, working with it, where I've noted, I pushed it for today's meeting, and I put that when the citizen clicks on it, it will route them to our city website and show our agendas.
Great, I want you to try it out.
Tell them about the one that we didn't get that we can still do.
Oh, the co-ran?
The, the module that we didn't buy yet until we get enough people signed up, but the, you know, the specific.
Oh, yes, there is a module part of this that we didn't sign up for at the moment, because we need to have, we have to have followers on the program, but it is a target option, it's an add-on, it's called a target option, it allows for, so say we do have a water leak in a specific area of the community, and the citizens who are signed up on this program, when we send out a notification saying, hey, that you're in, you know, no other water outage, or there's a water boil area, notice going on in a specific area, we can target citizens within that, that range and send out notifications only to them instead of the entire city, and not causing a panic that everyone, they may think they're- them instead of the entire city and not causing a panic that everyone they may think there are water boils.
Sounds like a good idea.
So we have to, we have to get the word out and get, get citizens signing up for it. And once they do that, then we can take it up because it's a monthly fee. And until we, and they didn't recommend us get it until we had our followers. So moving on with my report for the event portion of it, I wanted to start out by thanking Amy DeCharness and the Streets and Parks Department and the Police Department for all the efforts that they did to put together our Christmas this, this December 4th in the park. They did a really good job and they put a lot of time and effort into it. I have heard a lot of good feedback on it and we hope to afford with this again next year as well and just try to build off of it, bring in more lights and make the event larger.
Yes. Thank you for all your efforts and Amy's efforts. It seems like it was just about everybody that worked for the city was involved in one way or the other.
Yes, great. We did have some sponsors that I did want to just highlight from this event. We had Kennedy ISD Band Out. They were, they did play for us. Texas Star and McDonald's and Church's Chicken provided supplies and hot water for our hot cocoa. We went through 15 gallons of hot cocoa. United Rental did give us a generator. ZCZ Farm and Blazing D Ranch provided mamas for us to have at the event that evening. And those apparently were a big hit. We had a big line around them. So that's what I have in regards to what we have done for the Christmas in Kennedy. And as Joe had mentioned, the lights will stay up through the rest of the year. We didn't have too many new, new services this year, this month. We had utility building had 11 new residential's and four disconnects. Fire department said they had nine calls out this time and used 1,950 gallons of water. And the court indicated that they had seen 137 defendants and brought in $19,689 with a net to the city of $13,900.
Any questions from the council? Thank you for reporting. Moving on to agenda item number nine, city manager report. And the first item on this, agenda items, current projects, future projects, current operations and/or future operations. Mr. Lynn?
Good evening, councilmen, mayor, residents. For up again, I'd like to say thank you to Mayor Baker for doing the countdown for the tree at Christmas in Kennedy. And thank you to the council once again this year for permitting us to be able to do by approving the funds for it. Team worked very hard and definitely I just want to say thank you to the team. Everybody worked very hard, including Ms. Miles and all of us as well. One minor note I'd like to make mention of before we get going here, for you guys for tonight after the meeting, please see Ms. Miles. We have a stack of things we need your signatures on, approximately 60 of them. So just want to bring that to your attention before I begin. So congratulations. We want to pass these out to the team Friday at the luncheon. It's Christmas cards from you guys today. All right. That being said, moving on. All right. So last month I made the comment and stood up here and said that in December, we were going to have our first ever Small Business of Kennedy of the Month. Well, Ms. Miles made a great suggestion. I loved it so much that I decided to do away with doing it this month. We're going to begin in January. January will be the first month that we have our first small business of the month. And along the lines of Ms. Miles' suggestion, we're only going to do 11 a year. If we're listening, what the heck, you've got 12 months, right? Yeah. So the 12th month is going to be a small business of the year. Take the first 11 and choose and see who's going to be the small business of the year. We, we are very blessed to have city council on board with this, the EDC on board with this, as well as the chamber on board with this. So this has been very well received by all the boards and committees in Kennedy. So thank you so much for that. Moving forward in our projects and that, we already talked about East Main. I know the Councilman Rodriguez and Councilman Parker definitely wanted to be there for the time of walkthrough. So what we're going to do, Councilman Rodriguez, is we're just going to pause due to Councilman Parker's extenuating circumstances and we're going to wait until he's available. And then we will convene you, Councilman Parker and Gerald and any other governing body member that wants to get him. We will walk it along. So I want to address that. Also, it was brought to my attention last year towards the end of Christmas in Kennedy, need to see more color downtown at Christmas time. And I agree with that. And it's kind of a, a little bit of a task to try to pull off to get the lights for the recent trees and that, you know, because the recent trees are not new. So, but we're still working on it. So we came up with an idea and all I'm going to say about this idea is just be watching. There will be color downtown very soon. Won't be recent trees, but I think you'll like them. So if you don't, give me a call. I'll change it. But I think you're going to like that they're going to do what they have in plan. So I'm just going to throw a little teaser out there. I'll let y'all know on that for a little while. Other than that, Councilwoman Schultz mentioned at a prior meeting and the council discussed it and we thought it was all, I always thought it was a great idea, when you some kind of signage outside. And Councilwoman Schultz had mentioned, you know, what about the chamber sign? I thought that was a halfway decent idea, only because, halfway because we didn't want people looking to the building if we brought it out to the road. So we found a municipality in Texas that has a couple of signs, reasonable price, and we're working on getting all that shored up. And we're working on getting an LED sign to go right out front out there where reporters can sit in the open area. We're putting in an LED sign hopefully soon. That would be double sided. So people will be able to see it from both sides. Around the outside, we'll say City of Kennedy with our logo and our colors and that. And then you'll have the sign, which is totally programmable. So we are working on that. So just know it may take us a little while to get the final details and get it installed, but we are working on getting that done. So. Mr. Higgins mentioned the CBG Sewer Line Grant where we are on that. The crews are waterline. I just received the operations and maintenance manuals today for Wells 17 and 18. So we're getting pretty much done with that part of everything and wrapping that up. Ms. Miles and I met with Mr. Berger, the architect for the convention center last month. They brought in several renditions and they were very rough renditions. We looked over the renditions that they brought in and then took what the council had said and what residents had said they wanted to see and things they wanted, gave that back to Mr. Berger and sent him away to clean up those renditions. I'm hoping to have those revised renditions sometime in January to see those. And then hopefully we'll get a, another workshop scheduled for the council and the residents to see the renditions and give input at that point in time sometime in February. So that's kind of the timeframe we're looking at right now. Of course, with the holidays and all that, we may have to push that out a couple of weeks, but right now that's the target timeframe. And Mr. Higgins had mentioned about the eight inch waterline extension as well there. So we've kind of covered all the basic projects in the city. Any questions about any of that? Okay. Moving on. Do the financials. So we'll begin on the left-hand side as we always do. The available liquidity in the city, the general fund is 2.989. The hotel motel tax is 1.026. Water and sewers at 853. The paving fund is sitting at 2.449. That gives our textual account of about 7.318 million dollars in it. At the time we put this together, we had 2.00 million in cash. That gives us a total available liquidity of about 9.324 million, which is about 6.89 months worth of expenditures. So keep in mind what the auditors told us, we need to stay between three and six months worth of expenditures, three at the minimum, six probably at the high. So we're, we're doing very good. We're pretty good. General fund revenues, we took in 666,490 dollars from the general fund last month. Year to date, it's 1.42 a million and we're at 17.9% of our budget. We're pegging to 16.67% of the budget. So for the first time in a while, our general fund revenues are now outperforming the budget. We have actually taken in more than the budget. So ship's turning there. The expenditures, we spent 555,661 dollars last month for a total of 1.114 million. Again, we're pegging to 16.67%. Our expenditures were 14.12%. So we're outperforming the budget on expenditures, meaning we spent less than budgeted. So all in all, the general fund in and of itself is outperforming the budget as of November. Water and sewer, they took in 696,945 dollars. Total so far this year is 1.433 million. Again, we're pegging to 16.67% of our budget. That total is 17.18%. So water and sewer revenues are outperforming the budget there. So our total revenues are actually outperforming at 17.53%. So total revenues for the city is going very well. We're taking in more than we budgeted there. Water and sewer spent 506,098 dollars last month for a total of 963,221 dollars so far this year. They've only spent 11.55% of the budget. So they're outperforming the budget there. So our total expenditures are 12.8% versus 16.67%. So we're outperforming the budget on expenditures, spending much less than what we are budgeted. So overall, the city is outperforming this budget on both revenues and expenditures as of November. Okay. Any questions? Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. That's all good news. Sounds like we're rebounding from that COVID period and climbing out of it in terms of water revenues and everything else. So that's good. Sorry to hear that. Item number 10, consent agenda. This section shall provide for items that require action by the council, but where little or no discussion is anticipated. By a single motion, second and affirmation, majority vote, items under this section are approved without further discussion or action. Item A, consideration approval of regular city council meeting minutes of October 12, 2021. Item B, consideration and approval on financials. Is there any discussion on item number 10? There's no discussion. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consider agenda.
One second.
Motion for Councilmember Douglas. Now, second, Councilman Sines, Ms. Miles, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Motion carried on. President voted in favor. Agenda item number 11, under ordinance resolution, other action items. This section shall provide for all other official discussion and action items provided for consideration by the council. 11, consideration of possible action on a variance request of ordinance chapter 74, subdivision, section 74-13, special provisions to allow continued use of an onsite sewer system facility to be located on said property in the Carlos Martinez 19 League Grant Abstract 6, location being known as 515 East State Highway 72, with the stipulation the new onsite sewer system facility be located within the platte the homestead resides on. And we have a presentation on this from Mr. Albiar.
Yes. On, on December 2nd, we had a plan and zoning. The reason is we, we do have Ms. Chester here, the property owner, and Mr. Freeman from the Plan and Zoning Commission. If we have any other additional questions. Ms. Chester came into the office requesting a variance on the onsite sewer facility that she has on her property. It's probably an outdated, obsolete onsite sewer facility. So what she did, she came into the office, she requested to be placed on the Plan and Zoning Agenda for a variance for, to up, upgrade for her OSS that's located on her, on her property. We did have a December 2nd meeting. We did all the protocols that is necessary to send out letters within 200 feet of all the property owners. We did, at the meeting, we presented the PND, the, the information and the request. The PND did approve the variance. With that being said, then we now submitted it to the city council for, for final approval. Basically what she, what she requested is that she update her, her existing onsite sewer facility. For the reason is that for her not, not being able to access sewer at her property and having to avoid easement, ease issues and things like that. So we went ahead and just granted the variance to go ahead and have her OSSF updated on the property. Basically later on, she'll be getting the proper permits and everything for it. So we're going to be assured that everything that she does is going to be permitted and then correcting all the inspections that are required are going to be done. So basically this is now represented to council for approval, for the variance to have her OSSF updated so that she can go ahead and proceed to get the proper permits. If you have any additional questions, Ms. Chester is here to give you a little bit more detail on if she's, if you're requesting any other information as far as the, the variance request.
Questions from the council for Mr. Albiar or to Mr. Chester or Mr. Freeman? Any further discussion on this item? If there's no further questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I would like to make a motion to allow a variance on continued use of onsite sewer facility, system facility to be located on said property in the Carlos Martinez 19 League Grant Abstract 6, location between being known as 515 East State Highway 72, with the stipulation the new onsite sewer system facility be located within the platte the homestead resides on.
Second.
The motion, Councilmember Arias and the second, Councilmember Douglas. Ms. Miles, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Motion carries. All president voted in favor. Next item on the agenda, item number 12, consideration of possible action on variance request of ordinance 11-11, section A, SF, single family district, section B, use regulations, article A, permitted uses, one, ordinance 08-9-2011, to allow the placement of a manufactured home to be located on said property in the JVN addition of Kennedy Block 4, Lot East Part of 1, known as 249 Booth Street. Presentation on this is from Mr. Albiar.
This, this, this variance was also presented to the December 2nd Plan and Zoning. Property owner, Ms. Hierro, requested that, that, requested a variance to replace the existing mobile home that's located at 249 Booth Street with a current new, more, newer one. We took it to the, she asked for a variance. We took it to the Plan and Zoning Commission on December 2nd. The Plan and Zoning Commission also approved the variance to replace the existing mobile home with a newer manufactured home. Again, we did follow protocol. We sent, also sent everybody letters within 200 feet of that property to see if anybody had any objections. We had no objection to the variance request. So the PND did approve it on December 2nd. So basically she's replacing the old mobile home that she had there with a new manufactured home. She was also advised that all the proper permits needed to be pulled and she was also instructed the maximum size of a home that she can put in that property. She also understood that. So it'll probably be after the new year that she'll be coming in and you'll see some kind of movement where we replace that old mobile home with a new mobile manufactured home.
Excuse me? Pardon me, Mr. Albiar. Would you clarify something for me? What is the difference between a mobile home and a manufactured home?
A mobile home that's existing there, at that property was made prior before 1978. Anything before 1978, I think it's June of 1978 below is considered a mobile home. They're basically built differently. They're wired differently with aluminum wiring, basically. They're basically built differently. They're wired differently with aluminum wiring, basically. Anything after that thing is considered a manufactured home with copper wiring, and it's, they tend to be made a little bit better. So, that's the difference between a mobile home and a manufactured home. So, she's taken out that new mobile home, and she wants to get rid of it and put a new remodel in there. So, that's what basically what she said.
Any other questions for Mr. Albiar on agenda item number 12? Any further discussion on agenda item number 12? If not, I would entertain a motion at this time.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item number 12.
I'll second.
A motion from Councilmember Douglas, and a second from Councilmember Sines. Ms. Malsk, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
Motion carries. All present voted in favor. Agenda item number 13, consideration of possible action in regard to City of Kennedy casting votes on the 2022-2023 TCAP Board ballot for the TCAP Board Directors. Will you have a presentation on it?
Yes, sir. Hey, council, this is what we talked about last month, that you nominated me for. The TCAP requires the city cast seven votes. They don't require resolution or ordnance to support the votes like we did for the council. It's why this is just a line item on the agenda and isn't attached to the regulation. Just got to choose seven people.
Just to clarify, for the public's sake, this is the Texas Coalition for Affordable Power.
Yes, sir.
This is a coalition that's similar to a co-op in regard, they, they are able to leverage their buying power to get the best rates for governmental entities for power across the state.
168 municipalities throughout Texas, the state of Texas, are represented by the people that sit on this board. They negotiate the power rates for all 168 of them.
So, we fill this out?
Yes, we all just choose, and Ms. Malsk will fill out the final ballot across the Senate. So, really, that's all there is, just choose seven people.
Any further discussion on this item? Any questions from the council? Would you like Karen to make a motion, naming the seven votes that we'd like to count?
Would you like suggestions?
What would you recommend, Mr. Lynn?
Okay. I would recommend Mr. Leicher from Wichita Falls, Mr. Rizley from Corpus, Ms. Alvarez from Kingsville, Ms. Manila from North Richland Hills, and Mr. Rodriguez from McAllen.
Any further questions or discussion?
You will not want to be nominated?
I can't nominate myself. It's unethical.
No, I'm chosen.
Well, that's up to y'all to choose me. I can't choose myself. It's unethical. Mr. Leicher from Wichita Falls, Mr. Rizley from Corpus, Ms. Alvarez from Kingsville, Ms. Manila from North Richland Hills, and Mr. Rodriguez from McAllen. Those would be the six others I would recommend.
Any further discussion or motion on this item?
Who was the sixth one? I counted five.
Mr. Lynn?
Oh, yeah, we have to pick seven.
No more than that, right?
Oh, sorry. My bad. And Mr. Tomball, Mr. Escal, I can't even say his last name, Escalville from Tomball.
Okay.
Yeah, I had it marked by his name, so.
Any further discussion or motion from the council?
Did you ask for a motion? I'll make a motion that we cast our seven votes for the 2022-2023 TCAP Board ballot for the TCAP Board Directors for Darren Leicher, Wichita Falls, Miles Rysley, Corpus Christi, William Lynn, Kennedy, Courtney Alvarez, Kingsville, David Escal, Tomball, Karen Manila, North Richland Hills, and Roy Rodriguez from McAllen.
The motion from Councilmember Douglas, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second from Councilmember Rodriguez. Ms. Malsk, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
Motion carries. All present voted in favor. Agenda item number 14, consideration of possible action in regard to Resolution 21-16, a resolution of the City Council of the City of Kennedy authorizing participation with the state of Texas through the Office of the Attorney General in the global opioid settlement and approving the term sheet and authorizing the city manager to execute all necessary related documents and providing for an effective date. Mr. Lynn, do you have a presentation?
Thank you, Mayor. As many of you may or may not be aware, this is Texas's drug makers, the opioid productions that they had. And they were successful in getting a multi-billion dollar lawsuit in this. We have to, in order to be a part of this settlement, we do have to pass this resolution. I know you all, I hope you all received your court, your confidential correspondence that you reported from the city attorney kind of outlining things in the letter, a little bit better, so that we could just move through. Essentially, it's approved the resolution, and the city is going to, doesn't look like it's going to be a whole lot, but anything is better than nothing. I think we're talking about $830 for the City of Kennedy for the first.
I was curious about that. Current city share was quite a bit higher. I was wondering how they calculate that.
I, I did not get into that with the attorneys on this. This was calculated at the state level, not the attorneys, so. It might have something to do with the number of cases, you know, per se, so. But anyway, I figured whenever the, whenever our attorneys brought this to you, it'd be good for us just to go ahead and be a part of it, pay whatever free dollars we could. So, that's why it's important.
Excuse me, isn't there more money available, though?
There will be. It's like, it's kind of like the tranches. The first one's going to be real small, and there'll be more money the times later. Not real sure what those numbers will be, but those numbers shift from what I did before reading. Through this, it's going to be higher numbers. For right now, we'll just say $135, just seven.
I think it's about 27 billion to disperse something like that.
Any questions from the council or discussion on agenda item number 14? If not, I would entertain a motion at this point.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 14.
A motion from Councilmember Douglas, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second from Councilmember Schultz. Ms. Malsk, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
Motion carries. All present voted in favor. Agenda item number 15, consideration of possible action in regard to ordinance 21-19, an ordinance of the City of Kennedy, Texas, amending the Code of Ordinances, Chapter 62, Offenses, adding Article 4, Graffiti, Sections 62-125 through 62-136, providing for a penalty as a class C misdemeanor and a fine in the amount not to exceed $500, providing a repealing clause, providing severability, and providing effective date. Mr. Lynn, do you have a presentation?
Thank you. Okay, so we had our workshop, when we had our meeting, the mayor had gotten with one of the residents that came to him, and we had the deal, we talked about the graffiti and that within the town. Chief presented a nice little presentation on that, and the council decided that we need to move ahead and draft an ordinance for that and charge people to do so. So, what we did was, we found a portion of the code that had a free space in it, if you will, and that's what we're doing. We're creating a graffiti ordinance that we're going to update our code of ordinances with as it's attached. I went through numerous, or several, I should say, not numerous, but several other municipalities as graffiti ordinances and that, and some from T and L, they'd sent me that. Pieced this together is what I believed was the best capture that the council wanted to do in drafting a graffiti ordinance. So, if y'all have any questions about this. One of the things that we will have to do is upon passage, we're going to have to run the paper for two weeks because it does have a penalty. So, we will, we will get to the newspaper ASAP for them to do two runnings on this upon passage.
I was surprised we didn't have a graffiti ordinance, so I think, you know, it's something that it will help address this issue. It's something we need to do.
Yes, sir. And then, as I was going through our cloud files, we don't really have anything to address vandalism, per se, either. So, we're going to have to come back and create that as well. So, it'd be something maybe we won't have to first year.
Any questions from the council or any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lynn. It's a detailed ordinance, and I reviewed it. It looks good to me. There are certain parts, so I think I'd like to see maybe even a little more harsh. Because, like I said, it's a rapidly growing problem, and it's something we need to deal with and try to, try to keep it from happening as much as possible. But this is a step in the right direction, so thank you, Ms. Lynn, for putting this together. Any questions for the council or discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion for agenda item number 15. I'll make a motion to approve agenda item 15. A motion from Councilmember Douglas, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second from Councilmember Sines. Ms. Malsk, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas, or Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor. Motion carries. Agenda item number 16, consideration of possible action in regard to ordinance 21-20, an ordinance of the City of Kennedy, Texas, lifting stage-two water restrictions and implementing stage-one water restrictions, providing a repealer, providing the severability clause, and providing for an effective date. Mr. Lynn?
Mayor. At last month's council meeting, after Mr. Higgins presented all the data regarding the water loss and water usage and everything, he was point-blankedly asked if he felt comfortable with moving us to a stage-one water restriction. So, he answered with the affirmative, to which later on, the council had requested that we put this on the agenda to move, go ahead and do a stage-one water restriction. So, we drafted ordinance, moving us there, lifting the stage-two water restriction. Attached to the back is all of the things you can do in the stage-one water restriction. Mr. Higgins and Mr. Faradeth provided that for me for the attachment. So, if you have any questions, more detail about it, Mr. Higgins is still here to answer questions. If you have questions about the ordinance, I can tell them.
Any questions from the council?
Can we, if this is passed, can we have it posted to the website, Facebook?
We'll put it on Saturday.
There you go.
All be well.
Yeah, just so the people are aware that.
Spread the word.
Because it's been, what, I don't know, 20 years since the state?
We will, we, we, we will get the word out. We have it from the mountaintops.
Quite 20. I want to say more like 10. John, do you know, probably about 10 years since we've been under the restrictions?
10 too many.
That's definitely a step in the right direction. I'd like to see us get to stage zero, and I think we'll be there within a few years, hopefully.
When the water stocks flowing from that.
Exactly. Any further discussion or questions from the council?
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lynn. If there's no further questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion on agenda item number 16.
I'll make a motion to approve agenda item number 16.
A motion from Councilmember Sines, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second from Councilmember Douglas. Ms. Malsk, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
No.
Councilwoman Douglas?
Yes.
Motion carries. Free in favor, one opposed. Agenda item number 17, consideration of possible action in regard to establishing a date and time to conduct a workshop for the purposes of discussing how to properly organize the Parks and Recreation Board and amending the City of Kennedy Code of Ordinances, Chapter 66, Parks and Recreation, Article 2, Parks and Recreation Board, and adding Section 66-34. Mr. Lynn, do you have a presentation?
Yes, sir. Okay, council, so we had on the agenda some things to do, and council elected to go to a different direction because with that different direction, we need to actually officially reorganize the Parks and Rec Board in such a manner that it is being treated the way any other standalone board should be being treated. The current ordinances that we have treat the board pretty much as a subservient board to everything, and that board has been told in uncertain terms, prior to most of us being here on the board, that they needed to go to the foreman for all approval of all monies, which for a standalone board is just inaccurate. So, this is just to put this on here so we can decide whether we want to do the workshop to talk about it, and that's what this is all about, so.
Any question from the council or discussion?
We need to establish a date, don't we?
We need to establish a date, yes, ma'am.
Are we aiming for this month or?
Not this month, no, ma'am, not with all the holidays.
Do we need to do it before the next meeting? Is it that time, pressing on time for that meeting, or?
No, we can, we can do like we did the one time. If you all want to establish a date today that exceeds our meeting next month, you know, even to January or even February, we can do that. I was just asked to put this on the agenda so we could discuss it at this meeting. We could even just lay it aside and pick it up at the next council meeting and do it then at that point in time if you guys wanted to as well.
Just a suggestion, what about the 18th, which is a Tuesday, the Tuesday following our 11th meeting?
That works for me.
Are you okay with the 18th?
I'm good.
Yeah. No.
No?
Not as a workshop.
Following the council meeting.
Yeah, not as a workshop. Parks and Rec actually has their regular meeting that Tuesday, so they wouldn't be able to be in attendance for that.
We definitely want them to be there, but.
Yeah.
Any other suggested dates? Or do we want to set it aside?
Does it have to be Tuesday?
No.
No.
I'm not on Thursdays until 6:30, so.
Mr. Lynn, you have any suggestions?
Well, we could, you know, maybe do it the 21st.
Friday?
The Friday, the 21st, right. I'm, I'm out the 24th and 25th. And so, and Councilor Schultz is, is gone on the 27th and 20th, so that would be the 21st to 20. We don't really want to do it on a Wednesday night. It's church night.
What about Monday, the 10th?
Monday, the 10th, before the council meeting?
I would say the 10th or February.
Yeah, I mean. Monday, the 10th.
Monday, the tenth.
How about the twenty-fifth or Tuesday?
I'm just trying to think. Okay, Martin Luther King's birthday is the seventeenth, so we'd all be here on the tenth.
Twenty-fifth, anybody?
I'm not here.
Either one works for me.
You're not here?
I'm not here, so, I mean, if you all want to meet on the twenty-fifth, you can just know that I won't be present.
So February, then sometimes?
I won't be available the fourteenth through the eighteenth.
Of February?
Yeah.
Okay, and I'm gone the twenty-third on, I'll be at a conference in Granbury at the end of the month, so that puts us in the, puts us around the tenth and the eleventh.
Do they have a problem with the tenth, or is everybody available on the tenth?
What day is that again?
Monday, the tenth.
The tenth of January is a Monday, and the eleventh of February is a Friday.
That's fine, what time?
I would usually do it six P.M., correct, Mr. Lind?
Would anybody care to make a motion on that date in some other?
I'll make a motion that we have a workshop on January tenth at six P.M., Monday, January tenth.
A motion from Councilmember Schultz, is there a second?
I'll second. Each one waiting for sending to come back.
While you were away, we had a motion from Councilmember Schultz for Monday, January tenth at six P.M., and a second from Councilmember Douglas. We want to return before we call the roll, so.
Yes.
Ms. Malls, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Uh, yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Eighteen, consideration of possible action in regard to Resolution twenty-one dash seventeen, a resolution of the City Council and of the City of Kennedy regarding citizens' civil rights, adopting a citizen participation plan for grievance procedures, adopting a job training, employment, and contracting opportunities policy for Section three residents and businesses, adopting an excessive force policy, adopting a nondiscrimination and grievance policy, adopting the federal grant procurement policy two CFR two hundred point three one eight dash two hundred point three two seven and Appendix two of two, CFR two hundred, adopting a limited English proficiency plan, adopting a fair housing policy, providing a repealing clause, providing for severability, providing for proper notice of meeting, and providing an effective date. Mr. Lind, do you have a presentation?
Okay, so for our GLO grant that we received, pretty much as a CDVG grant, we have to follow the same procedures we followed last month for the CDVG grant over here off of Live and Waco, passing all these and adopting all these policies and that. It's just standard procedure that we have to do, so we did it last month. You all, if y'all remember, Ms. Langford's here tonight, and Ms. Langford's cohort was here last month, and she actually did the Section three presentation for the city. So it's the same Section three presentation that we had last month would be for this month, so it's the same verbiage and everything in there. The only thing that's changed along the lines of the verbiage has been the type of the grant that's been awarded and that. So that's what we have here in this humongous first pack, and then we also have to follow it up with the next, the next resolution, which are just the signatories again, like we did last month. Any questions?
Any questions for Mr. Lind or Ms. Langford?
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Lind. Any further discussion on Agenda Item Number Eighteen? If there are no further questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion on Agenda Item Number Eighteen. I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Fifteen. A motion from Councilmember Douglas, is there a second?
Second.
A second from Councilmember Rodriguez. Ms. Malls, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
Motion carries with three voting in favor, one voting opposed. Agenda Item Number Nineteen.
I heard a unanimous vote.
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought I heard a no. I stand corrected. Motion votes all voted in favor. Motion carries. My ears are playing tricks on me. Agenda Item Number Nineteen, consideration of possible action in regard to Resolution twenty-one dash eighteen, a resolution of the City Council and of the City of Kennedy designating authorized signatories for contractual documents and documents for requesting funds pertaining to the general land office, community development, block grant program, mitigation program, contract number two dash zero eight five zero zero six D two thirty-four, providing a repealing clause, providing for severability, providing for proper notice of meeting, and providing an effective date. Mr. Lind?
The council, mayor, this is part B, part A. We adopted all the policies, GAS, and now we have to sign the signatories. It's the same three signatories as last month, the mayor, myself, and Councilwoman Sines. So this was all on that. Any questions?
Any questions from the council or further discussion on Agenda Eighteen? If there are no further questions or discussion, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve Agenda Item Eighteen.
Move the motion. Councilmember Douglas, is there a second?
I'll second.
A second from Councilmember Schultz. Ms. Malls, if you'll call the roll.
Councilwoman Schultz?
Yes.
Councilwoman Sines?
Yes.
Councilman Rodriguez?
Yes.
Councilman Douglas?
Yes.
All voted in favor. Motion carries. Agenda Item Number Twenty, items to consider for placement on future agendas. Does anyone have any items this evening for placement on a future agenda?
I have something.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I would like to have placed on the future agenda that we need to discuss ideas about how to improve the block park that we have on St. Mary's Street between Goldie Avenue and Oasis Street.
Can you say those three things?
Goldie Avenue, Oasis, and it runs north and south St. Mary's, but the block is in between those two first streets, Goldie Avenue and Oasis. We own that whole block.
Councilman Rodriguez, would you like this as an agenda item for action, or would you like it as an item to decide for a workshop?
No, I'd like to see what the council members have ideas about it. We started to develop that park, and we haven't done too much to it since, and I'd like to see some type of action that's coming here.
Okay.
Unless, you know, maybe some lighting, maybe, you know, maybe looking at the prices to get it asphalt, the walking trail.
That gives me an idea of how to put the language in.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Mr. Lind, you'll make sure that that gets placed on the January agenda?
Yes, sir, I will.
Don't believe we need any action on that item. Are there any other items to consider for placement on a future agenda? If there are none, we will move along to announcements of community interest and/or upcoming events. Does anyone have any announcements this evening?
I want to wish the best of luck to our neighbors down the road.
Fall City?
Fall City faces Strattford Thursday at eleven at eighteen, Cowboy Stadium.
State championship. I was there, and they were there in two thousand and ten, and I watched that. That was amazing night, so, yeah, we wish them the best of luck, absolutely. Thank you for mentioning that, James. Are there any other announcements?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would just like to thank the council for their confidence in voting for me to put me on this TCAP board, so thank you, I'm very honored.
It's an important job. We all want those rates to be as affordable as possible. Are there any other announcements from the council? I have two announcements to make. First and foremost, as this is our last regular meeting of 2021, I want to wish all the council members, city employees, and members of the Kennedy Volunteer Fire Department a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And I want to thank each and every one of you who have worked so hard this past year to serve this community. Secondly, I want to announce that I recently filed as a candidate for the position of Carns County Judge in the upcoming March first Republican primary election. I have not made a public announcement about this yet because I want you all to be the first to know. It was a difficult decision because I've truly enjoyed being mayor of Kennedy these past thirteen months. However, I believe that as county judge, I will be able to give more time and energy to serving this community. I will continue to serve as mayor through the end of my term after a new mayor is elected in May of 2022. However, I will not seek reelection as a candidate for mayor in the 2022 city elections. I hope each council member and every Kennedy resident who would like to serve this community as mayor will give some thought to becoming a candidate for mayor. I hope that anyone who chooses to do so will enjoy being a candidate and possibly also elected mayor and enjoy this as much as I have. This past year has been challenging for all of us, but I know that good things are happening for the people of Kennedy because with each passing day, we have become better at working as a team to help make Kennedy better for our families, friends, and neighbors. It has truly been an honor for me to serve as the mayor of Kennedy. I believe the future is very bright for Kennedy. May the good Lord continue to bless the people of Kennedy, Texas.
Thank you, Mayor. Good luck.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any further announcements?
I only have one.
Yes, please.
Merry Christmas, y'all.
Merry Christmas.
I have one more.
Yes, Mr. Lind.
Don't forget, employee, council, luncheon, Friday, noon, six shooters, be there, be square.
Okay. All right. Well, if there are no further announcements, then it is seven forty-four P.M., and this meeting is adjourned. Thank you to everyone who came in this evening, really appreciate it.